We'll call the regular meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not a individual liberty and justice.
Okay, first up is approval of the agenda. Why move to approve the agenda? It's been moved to approve. Let's turn seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, first up is the 2025 Prosser School District Crystal Apple Award presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so glad the audience is so full. We're going to honor our Crystal Apple Award nominees and our Crystal Apple Award winner. Um, Crystal Apple Award is a way in which our community peers um, of our staff members and honor those that are amazing teachers and educators in our system. So tonight we have cupcakes and water and we're going to invite you up. And the nominees, I'm going to read about you. And then I'm going to have you come up and shake hands with Mr. Reiner and I. And we're going to give you your certificate and then we'll award our Crystal Apple Award winner. The Crystal Apple Award winner from the Prosser School District is their name is then passed off to E S D one twenty-three. And they then are running or vying for the Regional Teacher of the Year. And the Regional Teacher of the Year then it's elected runs or buys for the State Teacher of the Year. And the State Teacher of the Year is the National Teacher of the Year. So that's kind of how that whole process works. But um, I think it's very, very important for people to understand. This is a nomination by our community and their peers. And we have some amazing individuals tonight. So um, bear with us just a minute while we get started and we'll do a little reading.
Would be easier to go up front.
Yep. Yeah, I think I'll use that one up there. I think we're gonna do this kind of like this. Okay, this person, it says, I am honored to nominate Lacey Martin for the Crystal Apple Award for Excellence in Education. Lacey's primary focus is always on her students, ensuring that each one feels valued and supported in their learning journey. Her enthusiasm and versatility shine through in her ability to address the individual needs of her students, reaching them in ways that significantly enhance their knowledge, talents, and self-esteem. She creatively utilizes resources and curriculum to make complex subjects like college and the high school chemistry and wildlife in the modern world both engaging and accessible. So if we could well have um, Lacey Martin, please come forward. Wait, wait just a second. Stay over here because we have to take a picture in a minute. Um, yeah, you got to stand the longest. You're a teacher. You could stand up here for a while. Um, I think the other part is the final um, piece of this is we are truly fortunate to have such an exceptional educator in the Prosser High School. And if you think about it, college and the high school at chemistry, I don't know. I don't, that's kind of a big deal. So that means she's teaching college level chemistry to our students. And we're all about increasing education and the quality of education in our system. So thank you, Lacey. Next. This one reads, I would love to nominate Beth Mulberry for the Crystal Apple Award for Excellence in Education. To say that Beth is an exceptional educator is an understatement. She is currently a special education math teacher at Prosser High School. Beth is a very passionate, Beth is very passionate about teaching math. When she noticed that students were struggling to pass algebra, she enrolled back into college to get her masters in mathematics. She has always been a leader with the co-teaching model, but wanted to serve as many students as possible. She currently has several students in class that are taking algebra for the third time and they are all passing. That sets very high standards in class and students are expected to demonstrate rigor. I truly feel that she is a marvel and I wish for her greatness to be recognized. Beth Mulberry, please come forward. All right. It gives us great pleasure to write a Crystal Apple nomination letter for Mercedes Munoz. We have been fortunate to have taught with Mercedes for twenty years as part of the staff at Keene River View. She is an outstanding teacher in the Prosser School District. Mercedes is an integral part of the bilingual program at both Keene River View and Heights. She is an advocate for her students, their families, and the colleagues she works with. Her willingness to do whatever it takes in the best interest of children can be seen in the after-school program, summer school, pack meetings, kindergarten bilingual screening, and mentoring monolingual students at the middle school and high school. She works tirelessly and goes above and beyond daily, so every student family in the bilingual program has a voice. Mercedes. I am writing to enthusiastically nominate Hannah Perkins, the Family and Consumer Sciences teacher at Prosser Middle School for the 2025 Crystal Apple Award. As a parent of two middle school students and a member of the Prosser School Board, I have witnessed firsthand the incredible impact Mrs. Perkins has on her students, district parents, and broader school community. Mrs. Perkins dedication to her students is truly outstanding. She goes above and beyond to connect with each individual, creating a supporting and engaging learning environment that encourages growth, confidence, and a love of learning. Her students consistently express how much they enjoy her class and feel inspired to reach their full potential, both academically and personally. Mrs. Perkins' ability to relate to students is remarkable, helping them gain valuable life skills that will benefit them for years to come. Hannah Perkins. Thank you. See, that's why she's my assistant. She keeps me online. Kimberly Hoy is well deserving of recognition for her years of service within the Prosser School District as a nine through twelfth grade math instructor. She is an exceptional educator with a repertoire of skills to get the most she came from her students at all levels of mathematics. Highly respected as a leader in our math department, she's a lifelong learner that self reflects on everything she does to refine and improve her skill, skill set to benefit her students. Kim's high level math skills have earned her the right to teach upper level students in college and the high school courses. Kim is skilled at building agency within all of her students, making her a rock star teacher for lowering performing students that struggle with learning mathematics. Kimberly Hoy. I am nominating Pauline Chenier for the Crystal Apple Award for Excellence in Education. Pauline has been an educator in the Prosser School District for many years. She has a, was a kindergarten teacher for years at Keene River View Elementary before moving into an instructional coaching role. For the past twentieth, twenty-ish years, Pauline Chenier has served as a Keene River View's instructional coach. Pauline's greatest strength is in her role is being able to facilitate and collaborate with both veteran and novice teachers, providing valuable support and fostering a culture of continuous improvement. She's adept at analyzing classroom data, identifying growth, areas of growth, and offering targeted coaching that are both insightful and actionable. She has a depth of knowledge of the standards and many, and has many strategies and tools to be able to move a student from point A to point B. Pauline Chenier. Mr. Applegate has been a fundamental part of education in the Prosser School District for many years, making a tremendous impact on countless students. T S D alumni remember his classes vividly, even ten plus years after they graduate. As a middle school social studies teacher, he is not only remembered for his engaging lessons, but also for unique traditions like leading his students in singing the preamble, a memory that stays with them for many years. His influence extends beyond the classroom, having shaped the culture of at Housel Middle School with his firm, yet compassionate heart. Mr. Applegate is respected by his students for kindness and discipline and his consistently, and he consistently goes above and beyond by entertaining students with poems and other performances at school assemblies. Additionally, his contributions to the P H S football program as a dependent, a dependable and influential coach further highlight his dedication to the community. It is truly outstanding that he has yet to receive the Crystal Apple Award as Mr. Applegate is unquestionably one of the most deserving individuals in our district for this honor. Mr. Applegate. So now it's really fun. I have to tell a funny on myself. Mr. Applegate, you have to stay here. So I awarded this to him at Friday's assembly on January thirty-first and I said to him, as I shook his hand, I whispered his ear and I said, now bring the award back to you so we, to us, so that we can re-award it to you at the school board. So he's had it for a while. So I'm gonna do this here. This is his true crystal apple. All right, let's have you all here and let's give him one big round of applause, please. I was thinking, we should do something kind of funny. How many years? Overall. Okay, get an ad. How many years? Teaching total. Yep. How many years? Thirty-three. Twenty. Forty-three. Twenty-seven. That's a whole lot of experience totaling. One sixty-three plus or minus. We won't put him on the spot. That's a lot of years of experience and Prosser is really lucky to have them. Thank you, everyone. Please go get a cupcake. We got us keep going. Seriously, we don't have five dozen cupcakes for nothing. I don't want to take them all home.
Why not lose it or swish it more?
That's not a bad thing.
Yeah, I think.
Good to move forward? All right, um, that was great. Appreciate all the candidates and then the winner. Do a great job for us. Um, so moving on, uh, we're, we're gonna have a presentation on P L Cs, Deanna and the principals.
So Blake's gonna pull that PowerPoint up. So, uh, the board had previously asked, I think Jason, you asked about learning a little bit more about P L Cs, what our buildings were doing during P L Cs. So, um, we have some information from each of the buildings here for you. Um, go ahead Blake to the next slide. So a P L C, a professional learning community is a group of educators who collaborate, share ideas, and learn together with a primary goal of improving student learning. Outcome is by analyzing data, reflecting on teaching practices, and collectively seeking solutions to challenges within their school organization. The, the biggest point here is it is really about improving student learning. That's what it's about. Okay? So we're gonna go to the next slide. Well, each of the starts with Jessie. Like, yeah, you might as well all come up. It'll be a smoother transition. At least sit in the front row. Um, each one of them is gonna talk about what their focus is on P L Cs and they have, uh, some of, they have some pictures or examples of some of the work that they've done.
So, um, my grade levels meet in P L Cs once a week. Um, they're split up into groups of, because I have six, so I have three, and then I have three. And they're forty minutes. Um, we really focus on that time, really looking at our ERLA and ENEAL data for our reading and um, looking at our math. Um, right now our mass really on more of alignment and what are we doing? What kind of questions are we asking kids? But really focusing on what kids are doing and then what can we do better? So that's kind of where, what we do with them. And then, uh, have a specialist and interventionist P L C. This is kind of a combined group. They meet once a week, uh, forty minutes. And um, it's been tough with it because they have a lot of differences. Just starting. Um, a new book called Singletons, which came from Heights is actually doing it. And so we're just gonna start that book study with them to try and find some commonalities so that they have something to discuss. And this year I was able to get a transitional kinder P L C. So my two transitional kinder teachers meet. Um, we worked on focusing on fine motor skills at the beginning of the school year. And now we're starting to look at really more of their letter, sound recognition, and numbers. So that's been fun for them. And I've talked to Sped about getting a P L C going. We have not done that. So that's a work in progress.
Next slide.
So the one little, um, the left picture is a picture of an agenda. So every week we have an agenda. They know exactly what to bring, what they're gonna be working on, and then we type in that agenda so that it's saved on Teams, so everyone can go back and look at it. Uh, that's a singleton book that we're working on. And then I put our ERLA and ENEAL conferencing data on there because one of our big focuses is making sure that we're conferencing with kids every two weeks and we're inputting data on them. So that's one of our big pieces and seventy-six percent for ERLA and ninety-two, that's a celebration. So.
Thanks, Jessie.
Real quick, what is I R L A?
So the ERLA is, um, I actually don't know what it stands for, but um, it's the ERLA is the English of reading assess, assessment um, for the ARC reading curriculum that we use, K eight, and ENEAL is the Spanish version.
Individual reading level assessment.
There you go.
Okay.
That's my best guess.
And the same thing translated into ENEAL for Spanish.
Yeah, but it's really focused on what the kids are doing and their specific level and what their skills that we're addressing for them. So.
That's good. Thank you.
Mr. Gilman?
So our grade levels also meet once a week for thirty minutes. Um, keeping track, uh, minutes on Teams, uh, and then they decide each week what they're gonna bring back next for assessments. The main focus that our assessments, are the assessments really measuring what we want the kids to be doing or saying or knowing? Um, so that's been a focus and refining those assessments as we go through those different units. And the other part is, um, trends. And when you have good assessments and you can follow, you, you get good data and to see trends. Uh, a couple.
Pull it, just pull it closer maybe. I don't know if it's like.
Across the gray levels is that we have, uh, found that there's been, uh, subtraction as an area of concern across several grade levels. Um, and then also how often we're measuring with reading and writing on those standards through that unit. So increasing those assessments so that we have a better understanding before the end or the autopsy, if you want to call it that. Uh, giving the unit at the very end and going, oh, our kids scored really well on this, or they didn't score so well on it and knowing why before we actually give that assessment.
There are some pictures on the next slide. Kevin, can you tell you about those?
Yes, part of this is the thinking map. Uh, um, the orange piece is the thinking map work that we've been doing in the building. The, uh, piece that has, um, the double bubble, which we call is part of thinking mass, but, um, that's a coaching cycle. So that was happening during a coaching cycle. And then this is just some examples of some gray levels, how they're monitoring the different units and the assessments um, across the unit and how much growth that they increased from the beginning until the end.
Thank you. Jody, Heights Elementary.
Okay. Okay, so what we have is you can see that, um, every, every staff member has a P L C. We've tried to increase the time to an hour. When we went to LA this last summer, they really stressed that an hour a week. So our core, um, homeroom teachers have close to an hour, if not an hour or more time. This year we started with a specialist math intervention and reading intervention and open door. Um, they now have, um, P L Cs, and then we have P L C leaders every, or P L C leader Mondays, um, meetings on Mondays. So, and those meetings really talk about what we're doing on Wednesday when we have P L C times during our Wednesday calendars. And then you can just kind of see, that's our whole school I ready data. Go to the next, can you go to the, okay. And then these are, we're going through, um, Learning by Doing. That is a P L C book that we got from Solution Tree. And so we've been taking a chapter, I would say a chapter a week. It's not a chapter a week, but basically a chapter a month. And we've been just really working through this book the last, um, year and a half. We also went to, um, we're going through the book for singletons. So like when it says math intervention, it's our math intervention, but are also our special ed resource room math teacher. They're working through the books with their specialists and everything else.
I'd like to push pauses for a second. So someone with the microphone, could be me, Deanna and Jody. Let's define singletons for those who are listening or for our board members.
So singletons, we have, um, one arts teacher in the building, uh, maybe one reading interventionist, one P E teacher. They don't have like another third grade teacher when their third grade teachers to work with. But there's still work that they can do, but they aren't gonna normally sit down probably and, um, talk about what they're teaching in their class because nobody else is teaching that. So this is finding ways where they can be productive and talk about student learning and have some focus goals with, and not all be teaching the same or something similar. So that's what the singletons is. We have a, a lot of singletons. Um, yeah, they're, and I mean, they're in every building. So.
So, uh, um, is it not possible that like, say like, like a Keene River View singleton, a Heights, a Woodstrand can't come together? Are we doing that?
They do. So we have district P L C days and so I'll use my own art teacher, Mandy Stevens. She will meet with, um, Jake.
Jay.
She, yeah, she meets with Jake. Sorry, I get Jake and, um,
Wendy Tanner mixed up.
So Jake, um, her and Jake are working really, um, closely together because they're wanting to have that art. Like Mandy's doing a three year, so third, fourth, and fifth are building on each other. And so that way she can tell Jake that, listen, Heights kids, when they hit middle school, they will be able to do these, these skills. And so they're making a continuum basically of what is being expected, um, throughout.
That, we also have, um, those folks are able to meet, like today was a district P L C day. So, um, I was at River View and in the library had all the counselors and right across the hall I had all the reading interventionists. And I was just going back and forth between the two meetings. Um, because those are the days we have designated where they can come together because all of the P L C schedules they've talked about so far are during the school day. So there's no way, like, they might be able to virtually, but they'd have to have the same schedule at Kevin's building and Jody's to do maybe a virtual P L C. Those we've been able to do some time on Wednesdays at, on those early releases. And I, but today we did a lot of really good work in both of my two meetings. Well, they were doing a lot of it when I wasn't there because I couldn't be in both at the same time, but.
So I just want to hit, um, real fast. I know that my time's up, but those are our notes and they are condensed. But you can see the, like, one side is third grade. And really this year, because this is our second year doing it, we're trying to focus on instructional practices that have made the difference. Like, so, and again, they're condensed though, but the notes, the raw notes are more like, let's talk about those third grade teachers. They'll say that these are my scores. This is what I'm noticing. These are the next steps of what I'm doing. So we've condensed those just so I could put it on the slideshow, but that's, and they're a little different. It's third and fourth grade. Um, you can see the pre and then the post when they came back. The scores also. And so, yeah.
Any other questions for Jody?
Any questions? I love P L Cs. I do. I think it's making a huge impact on our school.
Well, and Jody referred to her P L C leaders, which is, um, um, I think leaders emerge, but she's actually taken people when she took them to the training out of state and, and there are certain people that are their P L C leaders and they come back together. It's kind of like the train the trainer model. I'm gonna lead this person and we're gonna go out and work and lead our groups, then we come back together.
Yeah.
So a little bit different model. So a little bit different model. There is some of that is also happens at the other buildings, but that's something she's been real purposeful about. Trying to make her PLCs work. Mr. Danny?
So we try to tie the work that we're doing in the building with our school improvement plans. Our school improvement plan, because we are also a school who is in, in improvement cycle with the state. We have a coach that comes in and helps us with that. So we try to make sure everything we do is in lockstep. And so in order to be in our school improvement plan, it has to be a highly effective strategy. And PLCs are one of the highly effective strategies. And so we wrote two goals this year. One was for the structure of PLCs and then one was to have coaching, in-house coaching for our PLCs. So we use Wendy Rodriguez is our building instructional coach and she meets with our staff weekly. And so up until this year, we just had PLCs once or twice a month in the Wednesday schedule after school for about an hour. And, and as Jody alluded to, they, they really say you should be meeting multiple times per week. So we still have the, the Wednesday meetings, but all of our staff meet in their grade level department. Peer partners are usually groups of at the most four, but usually two. And so they meet with Wendy once a week and they look at data. And some of the different forms of data, because we hear that talked about quite a bit. And this came from Chris Clem, our instructional coach from the state. There's mega data, which is statewide standards, how they do on the, on the SBA. And so our, our staff started with that. We sat down, what do we know about our kids? Where do they perform on statewide assessments and, and their previous years? We looked at all sorts of data that's, that's the really that thirty thousand foot. Then we looked at macro data, which is the iReady and some of the building wide. And now we're diving into the meso data, which is the grade five scores or the grade eight scores or the math scores. What is it at each level? And we're trying to answer a couple of questions. What do we want students to know? So that's the work we did around standards earlier this year. How are we going to measure it? That's the work we were working on today in our district aligned. PLC meeting was the common assessments and how do we measure it? Do we measure it the same? Do we report it the same? Is it apples to apples? And then our ultimate goal over the course of the couple of years that our, our goal is written for would be the micro data. We would be down to every student knowing everything about each of those students. So we're, we're slowly moving from that thirty thousand foot to the, you know, to the five foot view. So on the front, you can see the schedule of meetings that Wendy meets with the teachers. In the off days, you'll see Hall and Bolt meet with Wendy first thing on Tuesday morning. Well, on Thursday morning, they have the same time, but they meet without coaching during that time. And that's where they're looking at their instructional strategies, data, you know, some of the different pieces that they weren't able to do with Wendy. So they meet twice a week. We talked about the before questions, some of the things that we looked at, common assessments, interventions, enrichments, student data, instructional strategies. And then when we, when we go to the next slide, if we could, these are just some of the things that we talk about the impact of teachers. What, what is it that, that we have as an impact? Is it a positive impact? Could it be a higher impact? Are there instructional strategies that we need to add, change? So on the left, we're talking about what our strategies are and we know how to measure that and we're, and we're looking at the ways to measure it. On the right, for each of the partner pairs or the PLC groups, you can see the four columns. That's what do we want them to know? How are we going to measure it? What if they get it? What if they don't get it? So the enrichments and, and extensions. And then at the top are some of the pieces that each of the groups have put in. That's our norms and our expectations for each other and how we hold each other accountable. So those are just a few pieces that we have up there and, and as an example, we gave out, I think, four hundred plus bags of popcorn for our kids at our mid-year iReady assessment that had made the expected or exceeded that growth at that time. And we've got five hundred and twenty-five kids. So the, the growth is, is there, but it's not, I mean, obviously there's always more that we can do. So that's part of what we do is we look at is what we're doing, working. Are we seeing the results that we want? If not, why? What can we do? And so they're really becoming research partners to, to improve their, their craft and skill.
Thank you. Now, David got the.
Quick question, Principal Danny? The post-it notes are just a little hard to read on here, but, no. So under the column of what will we do if they haven't learned it? Can you guys just talk through the process of what you guys do?
Yeah. So look, I'm going to use math as an example because it, they're, they're exciting in the work they're doing. They have a curriculum that requires probably sixty-five, seventy minutes to get through a lesson. And the schedule that we had up till last year, they had fifty-five minutes. So that lesson would take into the next day. They didn't have time then to look at the cooldown till the following day, but they'd already started the next one. With our block scheduled, they're able to look at that. And the question came up, we've got kids struggling with multiplying, dividing, whatever. So they're taking a section of their block and doing targeted interventions. And so they're taking a look at what did we expect them to be able to do? Did they get it? If they did, we have in the curriculum, there's extensions or ready for, are you ready for more activities? And if they didn't, we go back and either reteach it, more practice. We also have some programs. I already has some My Path where they can follow through on a path on their own, where you can assign assignments through that. So there's a lot of different ways that, that in math, for example, they go back and reteach some of the concepts. They also look ahead and say, I know that my kids don't have this for this upcoming. So they'll pre-teach some of those skills as they get ready for the, the next unit that's coming up.
I'll go, just, sorry, real quick, go back to, I think it was on Jody's presentation on, on her slide. So there's a category in there with students at two grade levels below, three or more grade levels below. So when those guys hit, say, middle school, what, what's the process of trying to catch these guys up? If they're coming in that far behind. Yeah.
I'll use third grade as an example. Like, one of the things about PLCs that is working is that we are looking at data. So let's use third grade right now. We came in and that's not, that's a whole school. Third grade, I want to say we had seven percent. That was third grade standard at the beginning. Okay. We had over fifty percent of our third graders in red. Whether it's double, two years or more, or just one, or two or more, right? This winter, we have eighteen kids in red. That's it. So the idea is when they get, when those third graders, I'll use third graders, when those guys get to middle school, they should be, we, we shouldn't have any more reds. We, we have eighteen. And so between our resource room, between our intervention, they're, they're coming down. And I'm going to say coming down hard on them because they are, and, and they both are, I took our math intervention teacher to our PLC meeting. Our PLC training this in LA this last summer. And so she came back super excited. And what they're finding is our resource room math teacher and our math intervention teacher, they're working together. They're bringing data together and they're like, hey, are my kids struggling with the same thing? You're like, how can we work in those instructional practices and those moves to get those kids? So I think that it's, it's, it's working, what we're, what we're doing. So I'll help Michael out there.
I'm going to add to that a little bit to the.
And I, I wasn't trying to throw you, it just, you, you had the nice slide up here on, kind of broken down on how far behind kids were if they were behind, but.
And if you break it down to by teacher, it's even more impressive.
I think.
Kind of with what's, with KRV, with Jessie's slide, with, you know, conferring. They're broken down into emergency, at risk and then at or above, excuse, thank you. And so our emergency kids, now you're going to all put me on the spot. Our emergency kids should be conferred with twice a week, two to three times a week, two to three times a week, they should be conferred with. So that means they're being very specific in what they are. They're the gaps, you know, like those, those teachers are meeting with those kids two, three times a week. If they're at risk, no, those are emergency, no, those are emergency. At risk kids, our at-risk kids should be, thanks, Michael, once a week, once a week. And again, they're very targeted. They're not all doing the same thing. It's very targeted. It's very specific. And then our other kids are once every about ten days, two weeks.
I think the piece we're talking about longevity of programs and what we should see. You know, it's unrealistic to think that we're always, we're going to get rid of the red. The goal is that, our hope is that when those third graders then become fourth graders, that work is, the gap is smaller to begin with. And then we can continue to be more target and more targeted. So they're more ready than, those fourth graders are more ready for fifth graders, for fifth grade and so on and so forth. So it is a cyclical piece. And that's what we're starting to see on some of our SBA data this last time.
All right, Crosser High School, because there's a basketball game. David's the winner. He loves to talk in front of people. His favorite.
So at the high school, we, our PLC time is predominantly on our Wednesday, Wednesday time. We have three types of PLCs. We have what we call content areas. So, you know, we'll have math, social studies, English. They work in PLCs, the arts, things like that. We have what we call a community of practice. That's our, that's our grade level PLC time. Where we can look at data in a different light, just by grade level. And then we have our district PLC days. Our focus is the, go back to my notes here. So within the, the, the content area, we've done a lot of work with the, last year we started with teacher clarity. So our work has really been around priority standards. And starting our curriculum mapping, we started that with a unit of study. Now that's expanding on those days to all curriculum. So starting to map out curriculum. We always, we always have parts, we utilize Avid's strategies. And so we always do some work around that in our PLC time. Within the community of practices, so at the grade level, that's where we get down to like high school and beyond planning. Because each grade level has parts to that that they have to do. We'll, we'll hit some social emotional learning stuff through that PLC. Grade monitoring and support, one of the things that we've done this year, and this actually started with, I'm going to jump one step ahead. Ninth grade success grant, that's, that becomes kind of a PLC within itself. And within that, we started, we do a lot more grade monitoring and we started to try to get some strategies in place to support kids that needed the help. And we have what we call a Thursday swap day. So during our Mustang period advisory, we can, we can get kids to rooms where they need the help. Well, that just sort of expanded to schoolwide. So that, that comes into play as well with other grade levels other than ninth grade. District PLC day goes back to the teacher clarity and data analysis. We just worked a little bit today with the CEE data, some survey data. We also look at grade data at the class level and at the grade level level. So just to try to, to, to find directions on how to support, support there. The work, you can go to the next slide, Blake. This is just, just some screenshots of some different work. It's really hard to read because most of what Brian had put here, it actually had student names and everything all over. So he just sort of chopped it down where you just see a little bit. The, the slide on the left is actually what's called the homeroom dashboard and there's different parts to that. The screen he put up here, I, I can't actually speak to, I'm not really sure.
I can tell you what that is.
Okay.
So that is your ELA teachers analyzing kids' responses on the assessments and they're my perspectives. So they can see by the number, by each student and each standard, which, which standards they were successful at, which they weren't. They can look by individual student and like overall. So like in RL five, did we, there was three questions. How, how did our kids do overall? But they can also look at kids individually. So that's from your ELA department.
Yeah. And that's, and that part I actually knew. I just, the, the part on the left is just sort of a general picture of the homeroom dashboard. The part Deanna was talking about was the, kind of the spreadsheet on the right. That's, that's breaking down ELA standards and questions and comparing. I don't know if comparing is the right word, but in relation to like the standardized testing. And so teachers start to get a feel within their room, within their content, how, how it is, how students are achieving in a relative or similar way to standards based assessment. And so that's, that's how they're looking at data. The, the spreadsheet kind of right down the middle with all the numbers. That's a, that's from, from the ninth grade success work. That particular one on the left, it's cut off, but that's like, you know, say number of failing grades by, by class. Say by algebra or by English one or something like that. So that's, that's what that data is, how we can see it. One of the big ones that I look at all the time is data around the number of students that have one F as a freshman. That's big for us because that's, those are kind of almost easy wins. We can, we can turn a one F student, you know, to get them passing all their classes, two F students as well, possibly. Students with three and four F, three, four, five, six Fs, those are really what we call students that need tier three interventions. You know, and that's where counseling comes in and other, other elements come into play. But that's how we use the data. That's how we look at it. And try to come up with some solutions.
Question? Yeah, I know. You're doing fine.
I don't really know how to phrase this question, but no, I appreciate the presentation and kind of get more in detail with kind of what the PLCs are. I know this is probably the, some of the work that we should see in the school improvement plans come this time next year, whatever. They come out in December. I look at, the only one that I see a graph that I'm familiar with is Jody's. When we look at graphs like that and they, how do we? I'd like to see maybe some more of that throughout the, the entire district. You know, how's Keen River View doing? Wood Strand, you know, the middle school, high school. Because you can look at somebody, and I don't know if these are actual graphs, but I mean, typically see that early on in the fall, you got a lot that are two, three grades behind and then you kind of slowly catch up through the winter. It'd be nice to see some of that stuff maybe mid-year before those.
So remember you guys asked for data presentation. So that's at the next board meeting. So you will see some more data then. And we can do those as often as you want. We could do like any time, like we do iReady three times a year. There could just be an information item on iReady for math, for math and for reading. But I, we, we are going to come with some data. We've had some very interesting growth data in our ARC. Our, our, we have three years of data there now. Actually, we'll talk about it in my board report, but we, Kevin and I met today with a researcher from the American Reading Company. Because our data is showing some very positive growth. They actually want to do us, like do a data study for us on us. You know, it has some benefits for them because they might, you know, use us in some of their advertisement. But also it really provides us, they do, they can do some correlation data with our iReady, our SBA to see really honestly, in the end, what I thought was promising was they, their, their studies are showing that the ARC data is a good predictor of student performance. And so, and iReady is also supposed to be a good predictor, but do we need to do both? Like, we spend a lot of money on iReady and we spend a lot of time and but if we don't need to do that and, and our ARC data is providing us what we need, do we need to do that? Or can we just spend that time teaching kids instead of doing more, you know? I had, I think it was Mark Skeen say, we got to quit weighing the cow. Can we just be the cow? So there's, there's those pieces. So we're really interested in that. We had just a preliminary conversation today. We're going to have some more conversations before I make a decision on that, but trying to find ways to work in a more economical way and, and spend our class time on instruction. Because we do have to do a lot of assessment. If you really look at all the days we're doing assessment, if we can eliminate some of that and we have a tool, a good tool. So, so we'll talk more about that in the near future, but we are having some good growth. But a lot of times you just see the snapshot of the three months or six months. It, it doesn't look great. If you look at it over time, you're like. It do- it doesn't look great. If you look at it over time, you're like, okay, wait, you know what? Our kids are growing. This is, um, this is good. The problem is we have robust data like in ARC, but we don't really have a good, a great system for math. And so those are some of our conversations that we're having as well. Um, the, the high school is not currently using iReady. So having a system for them that shows growth over time, that's something we need to remedy, we need to find a solution for that. But, but you, I will, we will have a data presentation for you primarily on reading. It'll be reading and math, because that's the primarily the data we have at the next board meeting too. So, and we can do that as often as you want. It could just become a regular thing once, you know, every three months or something like that. Something that, something that makes sense. Yeah, for sure. Okay, you're welcome.
Third question, Brian?
Good, thank you guys.
Cammy, Alexander, Michelle?
No, that was great though. Thank you.
Great, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, next up is, uh.
Mr. Funk, don't leave. I think you're up next.
Oh.
I just wanted to walk up the door.
Do we have anybody signed up to speak? Anybody online, Blake? Okay, we'll keep moving forward. Student rep reports, Cammy?
Boys' basketball plays Friday at home against Toponish. Girls' basketball is playing tonight at home against Seela. Boys' swim travels to Pullman tomorrow for district. Boys' wrestling travels to Central for districts on Friday and Saturday. And girls' wrestling travels to Toponish for districts on Friday and Saturday as well.
Thank you. Alexander?
Um, I don't think so.
All right, moving on to, uh, discussion items, school building reports. Uh, Prosser High School, Mr. Funk, you're up first.
This is great, because they just did a big part of mine right there. So I don't, that's saving me. Um, so after the first of the year, it, things just start to roll. And the school year's over before we even know it. So, um, really right now, um, counselors have met. We are working on scheduling, trying to get that process done so that we can get a schedule out. Um, that usually starts with, um, getting stu- or having students go through a registration and picking classes. But that's just sort of to build your schedule. Um, it's not to put them in classes. Um, it's always a misconception. Um, they've done a ton of work this year on the course description guide, doing videos, any, anything we can to get kids knowledgeable about classes and, you know, interested in them. Um, completed, and they approved offerings. That's always important for, for a lot of students. Uh, the other thing that happens really this time of year, it's like graduation. It's here before we know it. So we start, there's planning going on now, uh, for all kinds of parts of graduation. Um, scholarship stuff, Justin's is in almost twice a week probably doing stuff in the school. That's huge. Um, tomorrow, we, we're hosting a Justin's Leadership Conference at the high school. We're gonna have like seven hundred uh, kids from throughout CWAC, uh, in our building. So it's.
David, you're supposed to have a bigger smile on your face for that.
That's, it, yeah, that one's hard, because we're hoping they, that we could, they can stay down, do their leadership stuff in the gym. But it also, it makes it hard on, on the whole building. And so it'll be good. But we're ending the day with, when, when those districts go home, then we, we, since we hosted it, we have a speaker coming in. That's part of the deal. And so then we'll have an assembly at the end of the day with that. So, um. We've got kids preparing for Shakespeare's Twelfth Night coming up in March. Um, and I, I really bring that one up, because if you hear us, about us having fights and sword fights and all that, that's really where that's coming from. Because, uh, we have a professional choreographer in, choreographer in, uh, with fencing swords, and they're doing, they're, they're getting all tuned up for that. So that'll be a big part of it. Um, really, that's the last part, where athletics, which they hit, playing as we speak right now. Um, hopefully that game, a win tonight for the girls, I think puts us next Tuesday. Um, I'm gonna just say that's a shoe in, but you never know, nothing's ever a shoe in. So, uh, they could be playing Saturday, but the other, uh, oh, the other part, I wanted, I wanted to show this out, kind of taking longer than I planned. But, um, kind of got out of my own comfort zone this last, uh, last month with, uh, I mentioned freshman success earlier. And, um, so they reached out to Kim, but Kim rolled that down to me, and that's a good thing for, um, uh, talking to legislatures. Because that grant is always kind of on the chopping blocks each year. And so anyways, I gotta do a testimony, um, uh, with the legislature on that. Well, and some other people did too. So that got it out of what they call committee, and now it's, uh, going to the Ways and Means Committee. And, um, I knew that once wasn't enough. They, they keep pushing, and I know it won't stop now. But so then I ended up doing a letter to Senator Dozier, just to continue that support. And hopefully they, they get that passed this year into law, so that we can keep some of that money going. It's not a lot, but it's, it's good. So just some new experience for me this year.
Yeah. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, Andy. Maintenance Department.
Good evening, guys. So I just have some bullet points of some projects we've had going, uh, some are close to finished. Uh, some are not. I'll start with the stadium area. We're probably ninety-five percent finished. We're waiting for a couple punch items. Uh, they'll have to come back in April and check the sprinklers test, everything that was built. Um, uh, we were waiting for a light pole to come in to change that out. And then the last, the cement was poured like two weeks ago. Uh, looked good. They double blanketed it for the weekend. It was plenty saved. Uh, we met with a fellow named John Peters. He's an irrigation guy out of Spokane. He's actually the guy that designed the system we have that I threw such a fit about. Turns out that the, uh, landscaper that installed it had no idea what they were doing. And the, the instructions they gave us were horrible. So hopefully we can get a lot of that worked out this summer. Um, the future plan, the next thing I'd like to tackle there at the stadium was I'd like to do re-rope the ticket booths. They're both falling apart, leak like a sieve. Um, the next project to report on would be the HMS, uh, Housel Middle School, the front doors. Um, they're in, we're waiting for some backorder items, some Mullins', and they can't, or Mullards'. They can't put the, the door hardware on until, until they're in, and they're not expected till probably the end of this month. So it's not a huge deal, but it's annoying. Um, sprinklers on the Housel football field are in. Again, they can't be tested till April, but they're in, they're underground, and everything's hooked up. Um, the one future plan I have, uh, there at Housel for myself to tackle yet this spring is I want to get, there's a, a solid set line that runs behind the three hundred wing. I want to get that on a timer, so we don't have to be going out, somebody turning it on and off every couple days. And then the one thing I didn't write down that it just dawned on me is our chiller, uh, for the house, for the middle school is here. It's over at the shop parking lot until, uh, spring break. They will take the old one down, hoist the new one up. I doubt it'll run. It'll probably take a couple more weeks, but it's here, it's, it's ready. And then, uh, here at this building, uh, you saw the carpets are now finished in the hallways, in the sped room. We have, uh, the drinking fountains are in, the, the hallways have all been repainted now. Uh, we have the bid for the, uh, to finish the last of the HVAC in the room next to you right here. Um, and then the plan I have for this building, uh, in the very near future would be the flower beds. We want to do fabric and rock and some fairly low maintenance. Uh, I'm starting here at the office, going all the way around. We have the curbs done last fall. So I'd like to get those in and, and get them done. Uh, we did a little bit of proactive work this spring. We pulled the pump and the filters and the float assembly at, uh, at, uh, heights, and we had to rebuild, needed bearing seals, normal stuff. Uh, it'll all be going back together in the next couple of weeks. And then, uh, we plan on starting our moles up probably the last week of this month. Spring sport starts on the third. And I'd like to have everything mowed once and painted once by first practice is the goal. Um, and then probably the end of March, we're gonna do our fertilizers and once water comes on. We, last year, we, we hit it a little early in plan, planning for water on April one, and it didn't happen. And it didn't work out in our favor, so we're gonna wait a couple extra weeks this year. But, any questions?
I have one real quick. I know, and, and it's been a while since I've been here, since I've got a month. But did we ever get the lights fixed on this side of the building?
We have not. Actually, we started putting conduit up. I want to say last week, uh, we're gonna run new conduit and new lights, LED lights. We, we have replaced, in fact, I forgot about that too, at all of the entrances. Uh, we took those, those nineteen seventies can lights out and put in nice, I mean, it's, when you walk out tonight, you'll see it, it's bright.
Okay.
So we replaced those like a month ago, and then we started on the conduit, and we're gonna do, starting at the office, all the way around, a new LED. Um,
Floodlight?
Yeah, floodlights. And the part, well, yeah, the parking lot will get, we replaced bulbs, but they're just the old. Yeah, I know they did the one. Is there more? Did I miss? Okay. Anyway, so we, we did a couple, but we'd like to replace the ones in the parking lot. In fact, while I'm thinking about it, uh, we also started, uh, replacing in the gymnasiums, uh, both the NPR and this gym and the two Housel gyms, anything that's out. Uh, we're re- re- rewiring, doing a ballast bypass and putting in the big LEDs. So from here on, anything that goes out, it'll just get rewired and replaced with LED. And we're, we, we didn't have very many of those left. And there were a lot of them you could have been, they'd work for a couple of weeks. They were so old, they'd work for a couple of weeks and then burn out again. So it was more trouble than it was worth, so. Anything else?
Any questions? Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Have a good night, guys.
You too.
Okay, next up is the CEE, CEE Survey Debrief.
So it's Eric Bowles. Eric, um, works for CE, the Center for Educational Effectiveness. He, um, he is who we've worked with, with our parent survey, parents, suits, all those surveys that we completed, um, back in the fall. So there's a little PowerPoint here, and he's gonna talk about this and share some information with you.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. Uh, I, I'll share just a little bit about myself before we get started. I'm a, I'm a retired educator from right around here. I, uh, spent a lot of my career at, uh, KIB as a teacher. And then, uh, fourteen years in Richland and Pasco, the last ten as assistant superintendent in the two, uh, in the two school systems. And, uh, Pasco was a, was a longtime CE client, uh, in eighteen nineteen, which was kind of our last normal year pre-COVID. We had seven schools in Pasco that were named as high progress schools by the state board. And when I reflected on, school supervision was part of my role. When I reflected on, you know, so what were those things that were unique inside of those seven of the twenty-four schools of time in Pasco? Um, I felt like there were four key components, and one was using some of the CE survey data, uh, to, to really lever improvement. Uh, in, in the overall, in, in the school. So I reached out to CE. They're a Bellevue-based company. I work out of my home in Richland. I still live here in the locale. Um, I reached out to CE just as an appreciative client and said, you know, we're, we're seeing some pretty good success, uh, in, in these schools in Pasco. Your, your data sets are a big component of that work, uh, and they, and their response was, would you like a job? Uh, so I wasn't really planning on punching out, uh, in, uh, in twenty twenty, although I didn't have to deal with much of the pandemic. So it was a, it was a good personal choice and, and good timing, as it turned out. Um, and I said no initially because the company's based in Bellevue, uh, we're pretty rooted in this, in this part of the world. Uh, and they said, we really want our next person to live in the Tri-City or Spokane region. So then I said, well, how quickly can I do something else? So been doing that ever since, really enjoy unpacking the data with, uh, with, uh, staff. I've been out with your admin team. I'll be out several more times to, uh, make some meaning out of it. Tonight, my purpose will just be to give a real high-level overview. There's two hundred and some individual items across the three surveys. In the ninety minutes we spent together, I feel like we just barely scratched the surface, and I'm eager to, uh, do a little bit more work as we go. And of course, I, I tire my own voice, so I'm happy to entertain questions as we go. So go ahead and, uh, advance that one if you would. So we're gonna just develop a little efficiency with the data. We're gonna review just the high level, we call it characteristic level. So as opposed to looking at the individual survey items, we're gonna look at the characteristics that we measure, uh, in the staff, student, and family data. And then, um, I'll, I'll be available all spring to, uh, work with y'all to plan forward in, in terms of how the, how turning that data into some actionable items, uh, in dovetailing with school improvement plans and district strategic plan, uh, ultimately makes some sense. So we can go ahead and go to the next one. So we're gonna look at staff, student, and family data real quickly tonight. We'll, uh, go ahead and go to the next slide. And this is the one slide I'll spend a little tiny bit of time on. So when we think about, uh, when we think about school improvement in the United States, since the inception of No Child Left Behind, we folk, we focus very narrowly on that far right-hand item, on the achievement item. We look pretty narrowly at reading and map data. I, I resonated with the term autopsy a couple of times. I think oftentimes we're looking at data, uh, in the fall that was done the previous spring. Uh, we compare across cohorts. There's some apple and orange stuff that's done. Rather than doing a root causal analysis around the data, we sort of end up, uh, putting some activities together that we think are gonna make a difference. And surprisingly, this approach hasn't worked real well across the United States. So this, this slide's actually from OSPI about two thousand five, two thousand six. And in my opinion, when I think the state was doing more effective work in context of leadership around helping schools improve. And so what we believe, we, we believe they were spot on kind of back in the day. So, uh, if we want to improve achievement or, uh, improve instructional paradigms in school, those are ultimately lagging indicators. Uh, and when we work with lagging indicators, you know, we oftentimes come up with inadequate solutions. So we believe it's important to look at this work left to right. So no- knowing who we serve, uh, is the demographic side of it, knowing what they think, uh, is, is important. And then, uh, when we know those two things, we start to tweak our school context. And the, uh, acronyms that you're all familiar with by now are, uh, we, we take that data and we make tweaks to our RTI or MTSS or PBIS systems. And if we, if we work in, in that sequential way, what we see then is, uh, is improvement, uh, in the achievement arena ultimately. So it's a little bit of a counter approach to, I think, what's been driven by federal policy, but, uh, a real effective one. Um, our organization also had a two-year grant to study the most effective schools in the state of Washington. So if you're out on our website, uh, we know a lot about what, uh, improved schools as a result of having twenty-four funded months to, to study kind of the best of, of practice. So it's, this isn't just our opinion, it's really rooted in what we saw in the schools that we studied. So go ahead and move on to the next slide. And feel free to stop me at any point if you have questions. I'm more than happy to address them. Um, when we see perceptual data, the question that we help people ask, we use the acronym SHE. Uh, if we ha- if we have a data set that's maybe not exactly where we want, we ask, what would you need to see here or experience basically from your station inside of the school system? Uh, to make that improvement. And listening carefully to what folks have to say is really critical. I believe that there's plenty of genius in all of our school systems, and it's really about how do we surface that, uh, in order to serve kids most efficiently. Go ahead and go to the next one, thank you. And we'll go ahead and go to the next one. We're gonna start at the staff level. Um, so there's some terminology inside of our data sets. This isn't your data. I never, I never put, uh, your data up first, because then we lose, we lose everybody's attention if we want to dive into the data. So basically, we use a five-point scale. We do that intentionally. If you look at the two blue colors, they combine for our overall positive response. Uh, we call out the gray in the middle, um, and then the warm colors, uh, on the far right are, are combined for our negative responses. The reason we call out that neutrality is it's hard to change positive people's minds. It's harder yet to change negative people's minds, but if there's people kind of in that, uh, in that middle area, uh, oftentimes we can make some pretty good headway by looking at those, uh, uh, responses where we see a lot of neutrality. So that's how we interpret the data by combining the two positives and the two negatives, and then, uh, calling the neutral out separately. So go ahead and, uh, hit the next slide. So these are the things that we measure. Um, our, uh, our survey is aligned to, uh, two particular, uh, public domain, uh, documents and approaches. Uh, the first one is the nine characteristics of effective schools. It's twenty-plus year, uh, research, uh, out of the state of Washington. Uh, we've added two characteristics over time to really conform to legislative mandates more than anything else. Uh, calls for responsiveness and district support for improvement. So when, when you notice the nine characteristics, there's generally a math person in the room. This is, wait a minute. Um, on the staff side, we measure eleven. Um, when I look at. Um, when I look at the, when I look at the staff data, just in terms of where do we see some, uh, where do we see some green shoots? Most of the, most of the staff responses are, uh, when you combine the two blues are, the majority of staff are positive. Uh, two that really stand out to me are, um, the effective leadership, uh, and the high standards and expectations. That staff are reporting that, uh, you know, the majority of staff are reporting, they have confidence in their leadership and they have confidence and. And that measures mostly building leadership here, uh, district support for improvements in its own category, and then, and staff also have. Uh, a perception of, uh, delivering high standards and expectations, and that's a. That particular characteristic area is a through line we'll see throughout the rest of the data as we, as we go through the rest of of the, uh, information. Go ahead and advance the slide, thank you. We're going to look at, uh, student data, we measure, uh, two separate, uh, two separate, uh, characteristics. We use six of the nine characteristics, uh, generally there's a math person that points that out. When we say why, so if you go ahead and advance one slide, uh, we'll see at the characteristic level. These are the characteristics that we measure as far as students' perception of their school experience. Um, and again, we see a high number of students reporting they, there's a high, um, they believe that there's high standards and expectations being. Uh, taught throughout, so that one really, uh, stands out to me. Uh, sometimes people ask why six as opposed to the nine or the nine plus two? So you'll notice, for example, we don't see curriculum instruction and assessment as a characteristic here, whereas we did with the staff data. And I think the easiest way to explain that is if the students or the families don't have any context for how the sausage is made, there's. Really no sense in asking them those questions, so, so we measure fewer characteristics at the student and family level. Um, go ahead and advance the next slide. Um, wanted to point this out, um, we know that, uh, the SE can be a little bit of a, a trigger, um. And so we, we also measure kind of how, how do students feel about their own agency in the second half of the student survey? I I just put this slide in here because, uh, we pull it from the roadmap project, and if you look at the, uh, outcome domains and skills and dispositions. As opposed to SEL, I think it's really more twenty-first century in its example, and I won't read them all to you, but if. If we look at, uh, if we look at those domains and dispositions, um. These are traits that I think all of us, regardless of where we sit politically, would want with our own kids. These are traits that we ultimately want with employers. And so we're really measuring, uh, that agency on the student side, uh. And I'll, uh, go ahead and advance the next slide and show you what that looks like a little bit here. So this was one of my favorite pieces of data, just overall, when you look at your, when you look at your students in Prosser in terms of. How they're reporting a- around their own agency, you'll see that the the vast majority of, uh, students across each of these characteristics are. Are reporting, they they feel pretty good about who they are, which, uh, you know, we know kids can learn a heck of a lot better if they come to school regulated and feel good about who they are, so. Uh, your data reflects, uh, some of the better data that I see in terms of the number of students who indicate, yeah, I feel. I feel pretty good about who I am and I feel like I've got good skills as far as grit and perseverance to kind of tackle the, you know, higher level work that, uh, we see at schools. So go ahead and advance the next slide. And then we're going to look at the family real quick, uh, as well, uh, and go ahead and go to the next slide. The other through line that I wanted to see is. You know, we see real agreement when you look at high standards and expectations, again, this characteristic family level. That was something that was a through line from staff to students to to families, so, um. We can go through the rest of the PowerPoint real quickly, uh, and I guess that's it, so, uh. What we believe, and there's a lot of research around it, that relationships are really the core of successful learning communities. Um, loved hearing the presentations around the PLCs. Obviously, the more effective teachers are in the PLCs, the more they can roll up their sleeves and collaborate, the better results we typically get. And we see that across all of our, uh, constituencies where, where where we have strong relationships with, in and amongst staff, students and families, we generally see better performance, uh. And so that's a a real quick overview of the perceptual data that we collect. I'm excited to be engaged in your district over the coming months, uh. I came from Orville yesterday, so, uh, Prosser to Richland's a heck of a lot better commute for me, so happy to come out here and work, uh, any chance I get. Want to thank you all for your time and attention this evening, and again, more than happy to entertain questions.
What, so what, what's next with? Going from here, working with the district and I guess hitting the street?
And I can answer that, but they can probably answer that better, because I'm going to, I'm going to work really at their beck and call, so.
So we have had, um, him with us one time and started looking at, and now. The individual buildings are going to meet with him, so they can drill down into their data next. And then we'll come back together and we'll compare that data with our strategic plan, our school improvement plans. And what are the next steps and the next pieces? It's, it's not a one and done, and it's not a data that sits on the shelf. We're really going to make an impact, we have to do something with it and make some decisions.
Yeah, my favorite work is getting data, whether it's our data sets, a CE, or their data sets, off the shelf and figuring out. Kind of what are the low-impact ways that we can make this actionable so that, uh, that we use the results to 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 see greater impact, so it's that. That's the work I really enjoy doing.
That SHE model, what does it sound like? Here, uh.
See here, experience?
See here and experience, um, that's in those gray that are in the middle, that's what we're, where we really want to drill down. What maybe do they think they should be seeing, hearing or experiencing that they're not? And maybe, um, we've been talking about marketing our CTE program, maybe it's just the fact that they don't even know it's there. Right? Or anything like that, so what are some things that we can make that are small tweaks? To how we're imaging, how we're sharing to make the biggest change?
Any other questions?
I think so. Cammy, Alexandra? Michelle?
Well, thank you again for the opportunity. Look forward to being here several times in the next, uh, couple of months.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Uh, next up is, uh, Rick Bullitt, CTE department. Been waiting all night.
All right, how's everyone?
Good.
Good. Doing good, doing good. Okay, so February is CTE month, and so we always take this opportunity to. Kind of promote ourselves through Parent Square, and if you, if you had, if you're connected to Parent Square, you'll be, you've gotten something. On a couple of different departments so far this year, as far as what classes they have, what opportunities they have and what the students do. Um, along with that, the different organizations have different celebrations that they're doing. As well as it's a really busy time of year for the, for the actual competitions. For example, today. I went with FFA to. Where'd I go? Topinish for, or or Agmech, and then I had, came back. The Proctor Hosta Testing, and yesterday and tomorrow, I've been, um, proctoring Hosta Testing too, so just. Lot of stuff going on within the organizations. Um, also another thing that we have going on is Alex. Actually has been doing this, filming each of the teachers describing their class, and that is going to go into. The school webpage for registration, so parents can get in and see what's, what's actually going on in the different classes. Uh, Kim talked earlier about, uh. College in the high school, we've started that this year with, with our engineering department had the first set of classes and twenty-one students. Earned college credit from Central in Engineering Design in, and second try or third try. Those students will have an opportunity to earn more credits in another class. Right now, we have students in robotics that, that will get central credit. And then, um. Third trimester will also have kids in Personal Finance, that'll be eligible credit. And so with that, we're actually work, working with, um, while wallet to see if we can't get our. Uh, all of our computer classes aligned with college in the high school with them, and then we're also expanding, we're also expanding into, into, um. Sports medicine and anatomy and physiology through Eastern hopefully. So it's, I I'm, I'm a believer in college in the high school and it's just a great opportunity for all of our kids. Uh, we're also creating two new courses at the high school this year, or for next year. Mackenzie Lopez is creating an exercise science course, which actually prepares kids to get ready to take their physical. Uh, personal physical trainer, uh, test. And then we've noticed. Across the board i- in in the high school that kids are really good with their phones, they're, they're really proficient at phones. They're not with computers. They don't know how to save a file, they don't know how to build a file, they don't know how to manipulate the internet safely and and effectively. And so Kason's developing a course that will teach kids that as well as online, online safety, digital literacy, um. Give them a little bit of background in some keyboarding, a little bit of background in Microsoft Office, it's not replacing Microsoft Office. How do you do a letter? Just some really basic skills. And then finally, I don't, I keep looking, but it's not going. Finally, just recently, uh. Downtown Prosser reached out to us and to start being their supplier for, for the plants, for the, uh, pots. And of course, it's a little late because all the orders have come in, we've already got our plants, but we're going to do a partial, partial. Um, partnership with them this year and do some of the main areas and main pots, and then next year, uh. Fully do, fully do all of them and grow, grow all, all their plants that they want. Any questions?
So I just want to add, this is the teacher videos and some of the things in the partnerships, right? Those are things that you've heard me talk about from the very beginning and marketing the CTE program, marketing the college and the high school. In the robotics and the different engineering classes, I think we do so much here that people just don't know about. And how we get that marketing out is super important.
I agree. Questions, Brian, Alexandra, Anne, Michelle? Thanks, Rick, appreciate it.
Have a great night.
Have a good night. Uh, next up is Review of Policy and Procedure six one one four, gifts and donation.
So this has been on here for a while. I hope that we've, we decided that the last meeting, but this is still in discussion, everybody, this is not a for. This is not an action item, so we want to make sure that we have this correct. The board will accept monetary gifts or donations from alcohol distributors only if they're located in Benton County. This was money, right, monetary donations? And then we went down to the sponsorship banner pricing, the, the district does not allow alcohol distributor. So I hope we got that right. If there's any wording that's incorrect or missed, please let me know. Let's have a discussion on it and it'll go to first reading next.
It looks good to me, I think it gives us. Kind of the. I don't know what the right term is, but that's kind of what we were looking for.
Director O'Brien, you were here too. I just would like to make sure that you think that we caught, captured it all.
Yep, I think you did, thank you.
That was all on that one.
So we can move that to, uh, first reading? Next up is, um, Review of Policy and Procedure thirty-two oh four, Sex Discrimination and Sex-Based Harassment of Student. Of Students Prohibited.
So there was a discussion about the thirteen to eighteen piece, remember that discussion? So I have the email, so it's not my words, and so it can be issued into public record. We did check with legal counsel. Um, it says, and his statement was, we are not going, we aren't going to be able to adopt a policy that is contrary to state law. So that's, that's his statement that we can put into public record, um, and that's just my information I would provide back to you. That was my homework.
So on that, we're kind of stuck where we're at there as far as.
Yes, I think our partial, our, our part as a district and my secret, as secretary to the board is. That we want to make clear that we have good. Um, procedures and understanding that we're going to do everything in our power to. Guide, coach, support students to involve their families in those pieces. Um, as I've talked to each of you at our meetings, um, that's, that's our plan, but at advice of legal counsel, they're not advising us to change that wording.
Alright, uh.
So I need guidance, am I able to move this to first reading till next time?
Real quick question, you know, on the, so the Parents' Rights Initiative that passed last year? That does not affect this, that portion of the policy?
You're talking about the Parent Bill of Rights?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, um, there's nothing from legal counsel that they contradict one another. I'm, I'm not saying there's not, I'm just saying legal counsel did not guide me that that was a conflictive. I think that's very, um. It was pretty defined to educational pieces and. I, I'm going to actually look at Dana, did you see any reason? Okay, alright, I just want to make sure that we, both of us were in agreement of what we thought.
Yeah, I think it can move forward to action item.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, moving on to action item number one is request for out-of-state travel. Sub-coverage for Thursday and Friday, April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and fundraising, Linda Sedolnik and Wendy Appley.
Did you guys get two cupcakes since you waited so long?
Please take one to go.
Good evening. So we've been doing, uh, Prosser Archery since two thousand fourteen. And, um, last year was our first year that we moved it up into the middle school. And Linda Sedolnik and I were teaching it or coaching it together last year, but then we wanted to give our kids more opportunities for practice. So she is coaching at the high school here with the middle school, uh, three days a week, four days a week, three days a week. And I'm coaching at the elementary school as well, three days a week. Um, we have, she's got nineteen students and I have twenty-eight students that are attending our after-school programs. And, um, now we're going to be, since we wanted to give them more opportunities to compete, so. In January, we attended a tournament in Cornell, and, uh, we've had some personal bests and the kids did quite well. And now we're going to be attending, uh, the state tournament, uh, this Friday, February fourteenth in Kennewick. And so we'll be taking nineteen and twenty-three students, nineteen middle schoolers and twenty-three students to that. And we anticipate that they're going to do pretty well, so we're here, um, thinking that we will be traveling out of state. For the nationals, which will be in Sandy, Utah in April. Uh, we want to continue to have after-school programs, we started it in December of this year, uh, continuing through now. And, um, we want to continue to do that in the years to come, and we also want to e- expand it to the high school level.
So the summary of our requests, as Wendy said, are out-of-state travel in April. Um, two days sub-paid for Wendy and I on a Thursday and Friday. Thursday, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. And then our third, um, request we would like to make, though we don't know, we don't have it solid as what it's going to be. We'd like to do some more fundraising. The only fundraising that we've done this year is we've been running concession stands at the middle school. When we can, um, but we would like to do more of that to help support our program. For different, uh, equipment needs and whatever else. Um, we bought teen t-shirts. Have almost fifty kids have their own t-shirts and to identify and. To be able to be more cohesive as a team. In fact, um, we're calling ourselves Prosser Archery. To include both schools. And then we'd like to be able to support, um, students who do make. Um, the trip to Utah, not fully, but to give them some monetary support to do that. You have any questions?
Uh, I, I don't have any questions. I think obviously what you guys have been doing, um, is awesome. Um, as far as the fundraising, I don't have a problem with it, I know that. The whole ASP, whatever, but I, I don't have a problem with, with you guys fundraising, so. I guess as long as it's done the way it needs to be done. Um, but no, I think you guys are doing a great job, this is awesome.
I would, I, I would second that. I'm a huge fan of what you guys are doing with our tree program. I was in Cornell and saw the tournament and. It was really exciting to see forty kids from our district compete, and I'll be there Friday cheering them on too. And I'm also thrilled to hear that you want to expand the program to the high school, so I think that you're doing great work.
Good question, um, I know, wasn't, was last year, or is it this year was the first time you had it at the middle school?
So we expanded into the middle school last year, and this is our second year. And the way we do that for, um, we have to do some in-school teaching of archery, so what we do. Is we include the sixth grade students at the middle school and we did, we. And we did, we introduced them to the program and then we integrated it with, um, a STEM challenge. Um, teaching them about force and energy. So that was really fun. Michael Harris. He's one of the other science teachers at the middle school. He and I did that. So when we. Teach it in the school during class, then we're eligible to have the after school program. So that's how we've done that. And we can include sixth, seventh and eighth graders. So just kind of a, uh, discussion we've had with one of the PE teachers at the high school. I believe the high school has a PE class that's sort of, I'm not sure what it's called, but it's like they do stuff that's. Um, how do I want to say?
Lifetime sports?
Yes, thank you very much. So that's something that we've discussed that it might fit in that type of P program. Um, in the next couple of years and then the high school then would be able to offer the after school program if they do that within the high school.
We've also hosted a coaches training. It's called basic archery instructors training. We've offered that this year and we had some local people. Get their training on a weekend at our school.
Nice. Um, what's your growth at middle school? From last year to this year? I know you got nineteen now, but what was it last year? I can't remember.
I think we had about the same amount. I capped the after school program at twenty. Because of me being the person in charge of it in the big old high school gym. So, um, I did cap it at twenty. We had more kids that were interested and they were on a waiting list. Um, so that's where we're at with that, but it, to me, I would want more supervision. And more equipment if we were to be able to expand that.
Any other questions? I moved to approve, um, out of state travel and fundraising. For the archery club.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in big favor signify by saying aye.
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 Well, that's all there is. Motion carries.
Can I ask, did you include to cover substitutes for us to be able to go in April?
Yes, to include subs, the whole headline. Did I skip one?
Just, just checking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks for coming. Uh, next up is PLC teams, the engine that drives professional learning community at workshop. Jody's up again.
I told you, I love PLCs. So I would like to take a team, a small team, a third, fourth, fifth instructional coach, myself to Iowa. Um, this is. I, I just want to emphasize the great work that our, um, heights teachers are doing with PLCs. Like we really are making such growth and progress. And it's exciting and they're getting excited because we're seeing the data and the changes and, um. And the growth in students. And so the idea behind is to go, um. And really work on those teams and how do we sustain them and how do we push them from, um, developing and initiating? To, to sustaining them when people are, um, move and stuff. So. That's kind of, um, when we were looking at different, um. Different PD in regards to this, this one really pops out to us and it's talking about skills. It's talking about instructional practices and student data. And Janil Keating, I don't know if you know who she is, um. She is, she was, she's one of the presenters, but she was the White River School District Superintendent. And she is a, um, a guru on PLCs. White River is one of the, um, first. School districts that really embrace PLCs and, um, and I know this just because my college roommate, it was, is a teacher at, um, White River and so. Anyways, we've listened to PLCs for quite a while. Um. And so I just think that, and in all honesty. I think that Heights is going to be just this mover and shaker when it comes to PLCs. And this is just going to kind of, one of those things of just kind of a shot of adrenaline. Into, um, moving us. It's not going to cost you guys any money. It's my OSSI money. So I have money for it. It won't cost the district anything. Um. Yeah, and we're just making.
I would add part of the process, when they receive the OSSI funds for school improvement, they write their grant based on their goals. And then it's approved. So that, that's, that, that, that's basically what she is written in for. So even though we have, uh, no out of state travel. This is her OSSI fund. She has to spend it and has to spend it on the goals that she's identified in her school improvement plan.
So for those who are listening and have been talking, hearing us talk about money, you'll hear us talk about money later. This is one of those pieces, we either call them pockets of money, categorical funds, you hear all different terms. So this is not any funds out of our basic education funds or whatever. This re, this is reimbursable grant money.
Are you taking the same people that you took to LA?
Kind of. I am taking some PLC leaders. So I've gone two years. I mean, I am, but I'm not. I'm go, I've gone two years. So I'm using those PLCs because we are trying to develop them. Into, um, very deep knowledge, um, with their PLCs. So I am taking, um, I'd like to take Julia Johnston. She went to LA last year. And then Kendra Wood, she went to Minneapolis the year before and Jed Hartsfield, and she went to the year before. And then Missy Summers is our instructional coach and she went to LA. So two and two.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Jody? All moved to approve the PLC, the engine that drives a professional learning community workshop. Travel to Iowa.
Sorry. Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next is the contract for email archiving.
Jody? That's okay.
Uh, in the board packet is the contract for email archiving. Uh, we are at the end of the, we're at the end of life for our appliance, for our email archiving. We have been with Tangent. Uh, our appliance is actually called a Data Cove. We have been with them for, it predates me for as long as I can remember. It's a, it's a really great service. They provide a great service and a great appliance. Historically, we have always done a five-year contract with them. Every five years, we just buy the appliance, do a five-year contract. Uh, however, given our, the current state of our budget, it's my recommendation to the board that we buy the appliance, which will be good for five years. However, we do the one-year contract this time. Uh, the amount of money that it typically saves us, I don't, although it does save us money, I think. My recommendation is that we do the one-year contract this time. Uh, and then we will just buy yearly for the next four years and at the end of four years, well, five years, at the end of five years, we can decide if we're going to buy a five-year contract next.
One question on the invoice. It says the. The server, the equipment is eighty-seven hundred dollars?
So the server comes with the first year.
Okay.
And then we'll have four years after that.
Perfect. So what's the actual cost of the server?
Eighty-seven hundred minus seventeen, I think. I don't have it sitting in front of me. It's in the board contract. Yeah. I think it, doesn't it say seventeen hundred a year roughly?
Yeah. Seventeen twenty-five.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Do you know a lot more about this than I do, so?
That appliance also is doing the backup for our cell phones.
The one we have currently? And then this one will.
And this one will just take its place. Yeah.
What do we do with the old one? Just destroy it?
Yeah, we'll just recycle it. We'll recycle it. Boise Cascade does our recycling and then they send me a certificate of destruction.
Um, my other question, is this a, was this a budgeted expense?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure it wasn't an emergency expense.
No.
Alright, well, I move to approve. The email. Contract for email archiving to Tangent.
I'll second that.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. You're up next again. Contract for the email spam.
Yes, I am. So I'm just going to sit here. Uh, so this is new, although I knew this was coming. Uh, historically, as long as we have had Benton REA as our consultant, Benton REA took care of our spam filter. We had a spam titan. And we kind of piggybacked on their account with their spam titan. Uh, when we terminated their consulting services. A year and a half ago now, I knew that we were going to have to get off of their contract and onto our own. Um, so we have until, I think, March fifteenth, the end of this month roughly to get on our own contract. Uh, I'm recommending to the board that we stay with spam titan. Uh, they'll do the art, they'll do the migration to our own account. Everything will look and stay the same. Uh, it will just be on our own account and out from underneath Benton REA. We have a couple of different options if, uh, to stay with spam titan. We can get our own appliance and, uh. Have our own server, do it on-prem. That's a kind of a steep cost. In, in the long run, it's a. In the long run, it's the cheapest cost, so to speak. Uh, however, if we go to a cloud solution, we can pay monthly. So in the short run, that's the cheapest cost for us. We do have to sign a year contract. But we can pay monthly over the course of a year. We can pay fifteen hundred dollars a month and stretch that out over the course of a year. If we were to buy a, uh, server and put it on-prem, it would be. A little bit cheaper for us, but we would have to pay that all upfront. So my recommendation to the board in the packet is that we go with a cloud solution. Again, it looks and feels the same as what we have right now. We're just underneath our own account, not under Benton REAs, and we can pay monthly over the course of the next year. And then in twelve months, we can reevaluate. We can decide if we want to go with an on-prem appliance. Uh, pay all upfront. It's a little bit cheaper in the long run. But we can reevaluate that in twelve months.
So is the. Yeah, this is way out of my wheelhouse as far as understanding this, but is it ten thousand eight hundred dollars for the actual, for the, whatever the thing is that runs it?
So the ten thousand eight hundred dollars, I think, and again, I don't have that in front of me. I'm sorry, I didn't print it. I think that was the, if we did an on-prem solution. And we put that as a server here, we monitor it, we manage it. Again, if you're talking just total cost for twelve months, that's the cheaper solution. However, that is all upfront. I would have to come up with that this month. If we do a cloud-based solution, they monitor it, they take care of it, then we pay fifteen hundred dollars a month. We stretch it out over. Uh, twelve months, a little bit, it's not a substantial cost more. It's a, a little bit more expensive, not substantial. And it's a little bit more, it's a little bit easier to swallow over the course of twelve months.
So if I do the. Sorry, I don't have it in front of you, but if I do fifteen hundred a month times twelve months, it's eighteen thousand dollars. Right?
I don't know. Yes.
That's what I got.
Um, but if we do and, uh, and granted, I understand cash flow, but if we do it one time, i- is it only ten thousand eight hundred twenty-two in chain?
Yes, I'm going to say yes, but I'm looking at the lead to nod her head at me.
Yeah.
If you pay it out over here.
But you have to pay it when I'm some.
Right.
So I.
But I have to pay that all upfront.
Do want to talk about one thing on manpower or time. If we buy the appliance and we do it, our team has to monitor and take care of the work.
That's accurate.
So the added cost is them monitoring and doing the work. And they notify, then notifying us when we have a problem. Versus Sean's team having a protocol and procedures in place for a. Bad boogeyman's getting in. I don't know if you want to say, like, and doing all of that work. Is that a correct statement?
That's a correct statement. There's a lot of pieces that went into this. One, we kind of pushed it right up to the end of the deadline. That wasn't my choice either. Um, but yeah, there was a lot of pieces that went into that recommendation. This is kind of pushing it all off. And out a little bit farther for us.
So if, um. Like I said, I'm just trying to get my head around it. So if we do the cloud-based version, it takes a lot less. Manpower infrastructure to manage that through.
It takes none of us. Yeah.
It, it would go through. A spam type.
Mm-hmm. So the price difference, the yearly amount is sixteen three eighty. Um, if we pay every month, that's the amount that we're paying. And then if we pay a one-time fee, it's ten eighty-eight twenty-two sixty-three.
Yeah, so we're. Five something. We're about five thousand.
So if, um, so why did we not go through Benton REA?
We can't.
Oh, we can't?
No, that's not an option.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're no longer our consultant. Yeah. Well, we, they haven't been our consultant for a year and a half. I have until the end of the month to get off of their account.
Gotcha.
They gave me a long grace period. I'm just.
Just tell them the checks in the.
I, I've, I've been keeping that relationship alive. So they would give me a long grace period.
It, yes, we're looking at overall costs, right? I, I get that one clear. It's the manpower and the time of that manpower. And what is going to give in our system? Like we're at the safety meeting talking about cameras and all the HVAC, what's going to give? In our daily operation system to be able to manage it if we don't use the spam Titan service.
So as, as we sit staff-wise, you're. Sounding like you're way more comfortable doing the.
Right now, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But long-term, if you had the ability, you.
I mean, twelve, twelve months from now, my recommendation might look a lot different. Twelve months from now, maybe we don't need the monthly payment. Maybe we're setting in a little better position. Maybe we haven't pushed it right up till the deadline. Um, we might be sitting in a much better position and I might be able to go look for five thousand dollars. We can do a much better job. We can do that on premise. I can definitely handle that for us. Right now, my recommendation is that monthly payment, the lack of time, that looks way better to me.
Do they give you a discount if you paid it upfront?
Yeah.
On the cloud service?
No.
It's monthly, no matter what?
Um. I would have to look at my papers.
The paperwork, the paperwork does not say if they give a discount upfront, just the, the fifty-five hundred dollar difference between the yearly and the.
On the cloud version?
So the cloud is more expensive and the, the one-time fee is cheaper. However, we would have to have the amount covered.
Right, right. But if they don't offer a one-time discount for paying it upfront.
My assumption, and I'm just going to go kind of go out on a limb here, it's usually cheaper when you pay it all upfront. They don't float a contract. But I don't know that to be fact. But usually it is. It's usually cheaper when you manage it. It's usually be cheaper when you pay it all upfront.
I'd like to know if there is a discount if we paid it upfront. Um, I mean, we got to be off in when? March first?
I have to be all off, yes. I also need time to convert that.
Are we, are we all talking the same thing? Though you're asking for a discount if we go with the monthly service, if we pay it upfront, right? Will they give us a discount?
Yeah, because I think at the, you know, today, I don't know, getting the system, the heart. Over the appliance thing that runs it. Um, doesn't sound like it's in the works, but if we, maybe there's a discount. It'd be worth knowing. I mean, if it's a couple of grand, three, four thousand dollars, might be worth trying to.
Yeah.
You know, to pay it upfront versus. You know, pay it over twelve months.
So would there be a way, and this is in discussion, I realize, but would be, there be a way to. Make a caveat in the approval process? Um, and then fill you in on the answer so she could move forward with the transition now?
Yeah, I think I'm good with. Yeah, I think I'm good with doing it for the short term, but if we can. You know, after the first month, we can pay it off and save a little bit of money, then maybe we explore that.
Yeah.
Um, I'll move to approve the contract for the email spam filter spam type. Monthly fee.
Well, second. Sorry, Brian.
Let me get it, tell this time.
Yeah.
Alright, so we moved in second in, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Alright, next up is vouchers and payroll. I have a couple, couple of questions, why is there so many different pages of vouchers? Like there's um. We got general fund warrants on two of them on one page, then we got. Eight of them on another page. ASB, then we've got another set of general fund payments.
Oh, all the different.
Yeah, I think that's what it is, usually it's on one and there's a big list, I'm just curious.
I think she probably separated these. It looks like she separated these by fund.
Oh.
So I can um, have a discussion and have her just do one.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that, if that's more efficient, I mean, I don't know what anybody else thinks.
It's whatever you guys prefer.
It's all the same, it's.
It is, I, it definitely is all the same, whatever you guys prefer, we'll do, it's not that big of a deal.
This is part of having a new AP person and learning what you would like it to do, so she was being efficient.
I'm.
And she's open to anything you guys want, it, it doesn't take any extra time to do either or, so.
I actually kind of like it like this, cuz you know the detail sheet is forty pages of detail?
Yes.
It kind of breaks it up a little bit. I don't know, Brian, what do you think? I like it.
Okay, we need to do that.
My other question, uh, hillbilly haulers lawn care. What was that for?
Uh, trees, was it tree removal? It's a local company in Yakuza, Andy Hyde. Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Kind of a funny name.
Yes.
Yes.
It stuck out a little bit.
It did, and I actually saw them in town, they live in Yakima, I was like, oh, we, we thank you guys.
Know those guys? Any other questions? Ryan, Michelle?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'll move to approve vouchers and payroll.
I'll second.
Been moved in second in. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next up is first reading a policy and procedure forty-three hundred. Limiting immigration enforcement in schools.
So I'll try and make that it's as short, but as concise as possible. Our policy forty-three hundred. Um, before was very outdated. And when the. Political arena changed and immigration laws were changing and so forth. We were advised by legal counsel in WASDA to update our policies as. Quickly and as um. Supporting of, of families and making our schools a safe place. And because there was such a. Major difference between the previous forty-three hundred and this one, that's the reason it's presented this way. And I welcome any questions. I sh- I guess I should add. This, it coincides with the letter that I sent out to the community um, approximately ten days ago.
Any questions? Alexander, Brian? Michelle?
No, I didn't have any questions about this.
I have, well, the only question I had is we go. Oh, nevermind, sorry. Just seems like the name changed from the old forty-three hundred to this one. Nevermind. I moved to approve first reading a policy and procedure forty-three hundred?
Second.
Been moved in second in, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Uh, next up is. First reading of policy twenty-one oh six program compliance.
We had quite a bit of discussion a couple of weeks ago, mainly centered down on letter I. Um, and this was one that initially had Boy Scouts of America, and we took all that language out, and then. We went too far, we took out religious organizations, and so we added. Um. So if you notice, it says regardless of their characteristics, and then I was asked to add religion back in. Uh, fifth line, one, two, three, fourth line, middle of the sentence. So that was what came out of the discussion last time to bring it forward to first reading this time.
I don't see. Do you have it in your packet?
What's that?
Do you have it in the red line in your packet?
Uh, Q two.
This is the first one.
Oh, there it is, sorry, I went too far. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kim? Move.
No, I think this is what we saw before, right, Kim, just that. Um, religion word is the only difference, yes.
Missed it in when we had the discussion and we added it back in.
Yeah.
I move to approve first reading of policy twenty-one oh six.
My second.
Moved in second in, I keep forgetting to ask Kami and Alexander, you guys good with it? Um, it's moved in second to approve first reading of policy twenty-one oh six, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You didn't hear me?
Motion carries. Uh, next up is resolution. Uh, zero one two five petition for emergency apportionment. I would like to make one slight edit to the resolution and take out sample.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So this uh, resolution is directly from OSPI's website. Um, we just changed language and updated the cash flow, the receipts, the disbursements, investment balances. Um, and this is to take an advancement for our apportionment um, of the twenty-three point four million dollars the state owes us. Uh, so basically, this is our enrollment money, this is the money that the state allocates us based off of our enrollment. Um, they divvy it up um. In different percentages every month throughout the year. So, and also the state makes interest while they're sitting on this money, which is why they divvy it up the way that they do. So what this resolution is, is just getting an advancement of ten percent, so they'll give us up to ten percent of what they owe us. Um, so it comes out to two point three four million. Um, it's an upfront. Uh. Advancement, basically, no interest. Um, they will still give us our, our monthly apportionment every month based of, of what they owe us. We have to pay fifty percent back by June thirtieth, and then the rest back by August thirty-first. Um, and my recommendation to the board is to adopt this resolution to help us with cash flow. To make sure that we are able to pay our utilities until we get our big um, tax levy payments in April along with our levy assistance.
Have a question, maybe um. Is there a reason why you wouldn't do this at the beginning of the fiscal year?
Well.
Just to, to keep ten percent in our savings account collecting interest?
It's, I mean, it's a great question, um, you can't do this in September, you have to do it October and afterwards, the state won't let you do it in September. Mm-hmm, we could have, I did not know this was even an option until a local district did it recently. Um, and I read it in the paper and I reached out to OSPI and I talked to TJ Kelly, um, and the executive director of apportionment there. I had a meeting with Melissa and she explained to me the process and what it was, and I, I brought it to Kim and Deanna. Um, and. I didn't even know this was an option, this, this wasn't an option until, till last year, until districts started running into cash flow issues. It's a new thing that OSPI is offering. Um, and one of the local districts did it recently, um, and it's, it's helped them tremendously to keep up on, on utilities and just basic stuff. Because we've cut our expenditures basically down to nothing, we've canceled all travel, um. Despite uh, grant program money, um, and we're. We're doing everything we can with what we have. So this is just a little help to get us, to get us through until the state gives us the money they owe us.
For those that are listening. It, the title is kind of. A little bit misleading, like it's a loan. And it's really not, it's our own money. Um. I, so I want to make sure that people understand, this is, we're not borrowing money, there is no interest. It's basically helping us get the money at the time when we, when we need it. Versus if you go onto the OSPI website and look where our percentages of apportionment, they give us twelve and a half percent in June and twelve and a half percent in August, I believe. And that's the reason they make those due dates back, because that's the days, months that you would get more money. And so they're able to do that back to you, so I just, um. I want to make sure that people understand, we have cut, 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 stop, stop, stopped. And with everything that's going on, you can hear it in the political forefront, what's going on in the state of Washington legislature. This is not a. Mismanagement issue, this is an issue of having the money at the time when you need it.
Time-wise, um, when you put in for this, like. I guess first question, is there any, been any precedent, it sounds like a new program, but has there been any precedent where the state says no?
No, so they will give you up to ten percent of what they owe you.
Okay, so my next question is, does the state have the money?
I think that's a question for Washington State.
Yeah.
I would just say too, I mean, we've, we have some things that, well. In one case, we have a lot more students than we initially, but that's what our initial apportionment is based on. Um, in addition, they have given us fifty thousand dollars of five hundred and forty thousand dollars they owe us for TK. And uh, when they give us.
No, no uh, sped idea money yet, which three hundred and fifty thousand.
Um, I think we've gotten a little bit of program or grant money for the last month or two, but that's it. Um, like, they're holding off on everything with apportionment, and it's putting districts in really difficult place. Um, it, the reality is they should at least, at the minimum, give us a twelfth of our um, funding per month, and they don't. And so honestly, this is money, we, if they were apportioning in the way that I believe they should, we would already had.
Kind of interest would we, would we get up the two point three there? Just, hey, it's funny.
Let's think about our construction projects, we chose to take that money upfront. And made a couple of million dollars in interest that we were able to, we probably wouldn't have been able to finish Switzerland without that money. After everything that happened, so it, it's, and think about that us times everybody else in the state, how much money that is?
Or broke.
Dollar here, dollar there, man.
Yeah.
It's our money, might as well collect the interest on it. Um. Michelle, do you have any questions?
No, I hear you telling Delise to put a reminder on her calendar for October first next year.
I didn't, I thought it was more subtle than that.
No, no other questions, so thanks for the explanation.
Kami Alexander, any questions? I move to approve resolution zero one twenty-five petition for emergency apportionment advancement.
My second.
It's been moved in second, this is a roll call vote, Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
I too will vote aye, motion carries. Uh, moving on to resolution zero two twenty-five, authorizing an interphone loan from Capital Projects to the general fund.
Hey, this goes back to me not knowing everything. Um, in November, we discussed openly about our cash flow issues, um, we had an eight hundred thousand dollar insurance payment that we had to fork out. Um, we didn't get any of our title grants, um, oh, a bunch of our grants until December. So cash flow was tight in November, uh, November twenty-fifth. I realized that we weren't going to be able to make payroll. So I discussed with Kim and Deanna what our next options were. Um, I decided as a business manager to transfer um, six hundred and eighty thousand from capital to general, to cover payroll. Um. Again, as a new business manager, I did not know that I needed to have a resolution adopted before that. Um, on January thirty-first, my fiscal specialist and I were looking at the county manual for other reasons. And I was looking at transfers and um, saw the language that we had to have. Uh, assigned board resolution before we did any interfund loans. As soon as I, I found that error, I brought it to Kim and Deanna's attention. Wrote the resolution, um, and.
So I want to make it real clear to anyone who's listening, or for those who will watch this later, if you really read the resolution. We are being very transparent when we learn something, it says the date we did it, the date we found the error, how fast we turned it around. We are not trying to. I don't know, cover up, hide, whatever, when we make a mistake, that goes for Deanna, Delise and I, we own them. And we fix them properly and transparently. Um, so we just want to make everybody who's listening aware of that.
Any other questions for Delise? Move to approve resolution zero two twenty-five authorizing an interphone loan from Capital Projects fund to the general fund.
Second.
Been moved in second in, this is a roll call vote, Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
I too will vote aye, motion carries. Thank you, Delise.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to consent items, I would like to poll. I'd like to poll classified uh, personnel from the consent agenda. And approve consent items one and three.
I would move to approve consent items one and three.
Okay, I'll second that. Thank you. Um. Any other discussion? Kami, Alexander, Michelle? Been moved in second for approved consent items one and three, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And. Um, moving on to consent item number two, I would like to poll Rebecca Gonzalez off of the. Off the resignation list as health room assistant at Prosser High. And go ahead and I move to approve classified. Personnel as amended.
Second.
Been moved in second in. To approve classified personnel, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, that's it for action items, go right to reports. Delise, you're up. Again.
I am up again, okay, so I have uh, December's financials. Um. And you can see. Not in the greatest place, we're better than November. Not in the greatest place, we're better than November. Um, we didn't dip into our fund balance in December, which is great. Um, and we're, we're slowly, slowly, slowly increasing. Um, I will say that I know we're not talking about student enrollment right now. Um, the next board meeting we will, but Kim and I were just finalizing enrollment yesterday. And we're up thirteen or fourteen um for the month of February, which is wild. Uh, we had thirty-four new enrollments in the month of February. Um, so I'm, I am confident that with our our resolutions tonight and our um cut spending. Um, that our fund balance and our cash flow is going to continue to get better throughout the year with. Things that the three of us are making.
Creating any questions for Delise, Kami, Alexander, Michelle?
Yeah, Delise, would it, I thought, you know, in the resolution, we just saw, um. It was really helpful to see the projected fund balance through the year. I'm wondering if there's a way to incorporate that. Maybe at the bottom of this chart, so we could not only see the actual fund balance, but also what's projected.
Uh, yeah, I can definitely do that. Um, I will work on that and we'll see if we can add something to the bottom of it to see the projected.
Okay, thanks.
Any question? Thank you, Delise, answer?
Thank you.
Um, I already talked about some of mine, so I will say I did attend WSU Teaching Bridge meeting, their Teaching Bridge. Student right here, Kami, um, who's in our Ed two O one class with Mrs. Blair. So Teaching Bridge is a grant through WSU that's to bridge students from. Uh, working here and trying to learn about teaching on to go to WSU if they so choose. And at that time, they would start working for us as a para educator, as a substitute for the first two years. And then um hopefully be hired as a para educator and roll into their student teaching and then become a teacher for us. So um, it's a really great program. Um, we've been doing a grow your own for a long time. We started with paras and now we're working with high school students, so it's pretty exciting. We have our first student this year who's um a. Bullet WSU and working for us as a substitute parent. Um, so we, Kami's in that program, she has opportunity apply if that's something she wants to do. Uh, so they have now expanded, have a grant that actually, because there was really no money involved. Um, it was just a program, but now there is some money, so Mrs. Blair and I are working on, we're going to work on uh. Some ways to expand some of the education and exposure we give to kids to the uh to careers in education. Because it isn't just teaching, we've talked about exposing to some other careers. We have hard time with school psychs and SLPs and all those positions, so might be things kids are interested in as well. And then Kevin and I worked together today, try, working on defining our job responsibilities as we divide up those roles next year. Some things don't divide so well, um, but it'll be transitioning anyway as he's learning grant systems and all those kinds of things. But um, I'm looking forward to the partnership when he's, he's with us. Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah, any questions? All right, Kim?
Well, I, I, as always, I give you my piece of paper just for your records. Um. The Crystal Apple Award, Boys and Girls uh Club Youth of the Year Award was a great event. It was nice to sit with. The mayor and and Director Reiner and and we had a great time, really exciting last um. Let's see, Tuesday, nowadays kind of run together, um, I presented with our cross-country coach. And some other community members about potentially building a cross-country. Practice and. Meet. Track, I guess is what you would call it, out and if you're from here, you know what the spray field is. I didn't know what the spray field was. So the spray field um out of Bentonson Road. Um, and so they were very amiable to that work, so we're gonna go, that was at their study session. So now we're gonna go and present at the end of the month to see if we can move forward with starting the actual permit process and so forth. And it's, okay, Delise, you ready? Doesn't cost us any money, maybe a little bit of few permits, but it's not a, an outgoing huge uh cost. Um, I think it's really important for everybody to know, we're having a study session next Thursday. It's all about enrollment and apportionment. We're going to show you some numbers, some services that we're using to show it, that we're doing a good job. And being really forward thinking. Um. Legal, we just have one small situation, I'm hoping it to be done tonight, tomorrow, and hopefully be done. Um, the capital committee meetings are beginning. You can remember, the school board has tasked me with coming up with a way to project and plan. For the upkeep of our build, beautiful buildings and our facilities as we move forward. There's going to be a point where we need to transfer and expand transportation and different things, and so. We're putting a committee together with the goal that we would um meet quarterly per se. The first meeting will be in March. We have some community members, we have some staff, um, and so we're really excited about that step. That was one of my goals for the year. Friends of the Fields meetings have been going on. We have some action items that we're working on. Andy shared a little bit about like when it up, when fertilizer's going on, and so we're getting some input. And because then we have eyes on all of the different places, so I think that's a positive. Um. The only other thing that I think under Capital Projects I want to talk about is um. The old tennis courts. Um, we, the minute this cold weather breaks, so we might even see some activity out there about the twentieth, twenty-fifth of the month, right? As soon as this piece parts and they'll be tearing out the old portions of the tennis court. We're really excited that we're going to have one tennis court and six pickleball courts. And that the nice part about that is that the high school P E will be able to come down and use pickleball courts. And leadership, uh, monthly one-on-one meetings at the board. Um, monthly one-on-one meetings with the building principals, um. And I've been, uh, because of the legislature being in session, money the way it is, political uh climate as it is. The superintendents are meeting with uh um OSPI Superintendent Chris Wrightville, so I'm keeping up on that. And remember, there's no school on Friday, um, no school on Monday, everybody gets a four-day weekend. And the final thing for those that are listening and most of our um who are listening, but somebody may listen, it's recorded. We really work hard to not release students early when it's snowing. You need to understand why. We cannot release students home early if we cannot guarantee that there's someone home to receive them, especially when they're little. So. Um, we'll be watching the news, it's saying that if you look at the radar, it's saying between ten and eleven tomorrow, it's only one to two inches of snow. But if you're wondering why we're not releasing, that's, you need to understand that piece. And um, I think the other piece for 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 public record that I want to stay is. There is no simple way to make money better than buckle down and just be really tight. And be really proactive. Um, Delise, um, I have to commend her again, but I also want people to understand, we take this very serious. And it becomes very personal. And we want you to know that if you feel something, hear something. You need to pick up the phone and call and ask and let us explain what we're doing. And um, because we will explain until you understand, and it doesn't always mean that you may agree or disagree. But it's that you really understand and feel like you can talk about it in the grocery store. Or the, or anytime somebody asks you, I just use the grocery store as an example.
Great, thanks. Any questions for Kim? Thank you. Uh, board reports, Michelle?
Yeah, well, I really appreciated the um presentation on PLCs. And I thought I heard Deanna to say we're going to be seeing some data in the next month's meeting. Is that right?
Of the month.
Sorry, what was that?
Sorry, a microphone issue. Um, you'll have it at the end of the, the second meeting of the month.
Great, um, and I will, I will personally uh take you up on your offer to have that more frequently, like maybe every quarter would be great. Um. I already mentioned this earlier, but I did go to the archery tournament in Cornell. It was really, really cool to watch. Um, I was amazed that we have forty archers between just West Rand and the middle school competing. Um, it's, it's a very, very cool program for anyone who, you know, has Friday off school and needs something to go do. You could see um all these archers competing in the state archery tournament with Benton County Fairgrounds. Um, I will be there and I'm looking forward to cheering on our students. And then I also um had the opportunity, I had never done this before, but um judged at our local history night. Which was at Housel on the sixth, and that was very cool. I judged the um documentary category. So I got to watch uh six or seven great in-progress documentaries and all these students will be participating. In Regional National History Day, um, which PHS is hosting. I want to say it is, oh gosh, March. Eighth, maybe? Someone knows that date. Yes, thank you. Um, I know that they are still soliciting judges. They need seventy-five judges in order to host the regional competition, so. Um, there is a QR code floating around, I know on social media, some people might have a printed copy, but I'm certain you could contact Dean Smith. Um, if you need information on that too. And that's all I've got.
Uh, it's last Tuesday, I missed the girls' game but was able to catch the boys. Um. Game along with uh senior night for them, also senior night for the band. It's always cool to see students and parents and family members out there and then uh. Made a quick stop by a history night at the middle school last week as well. Um, didn't get to see a ton, but did look like there was some good stuff there and just want to thank the volunteers that helped put that on.
Thank you. Uh, since I was gone for a month, it seems like, um, I appreciate everybody holding the fort. Uh, but I wanted to really thank everybody for the gifts and stuff for board appreciation, the notes, it does mean a lot, so thank you. Um. I did have a chance to be a judge for the Boys and Girls Club um Youth of the Year. Um, it was a bit. It's kind of nerve-wracking and fun at the same time, but the uh, the three finalists, we had one from Prosser. One from Canowick and one from Pasco. Uh, they did a tremendous job presenting their speeches, uh, then of course it's interview process, it, you know, so it was a. I think a nerve-wracking process, it'd be for me, but I couldn't imagine, you know, being, I think most of them were sophomores. Um, but they did a tremendous job, then got to sit, uh, go to the next day where they did the uh. Um. I don't, that'd be announce the winner, uh, which was a very good event in Richland, um. And just wanted to say, you know, Roxy was our Prosser finalist, um, she goes here, Prosser High School. Uh, she did a tremendous job uh representing herself, her, her community and the club, so. Uh, kudos to her and just wish her a ton of success in the future. I think she will do well and I hope she continues to. To be in this program, because I, I think she could be the winner uh in the future, so. With that, uh, next week, we have a study session, um, February, no, yeah, February twentieth, right here at six P M. A regular board meeting, February twenty-sixth, right here at six P M. With that, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.